With the roll call.
Councilman Daley?
Here.
Councilman Duper?
Present.
Councilman Papescu? Mayor Pretempery Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Rigsby?
Here.
Thank you. We have a forum.
Thank you. Now, we have a report from our city attorney on our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council has been in closed session. The item on the city council agenda is identified as Item C on the council agenda, which was a matter involving potential dismissal of an employee. The city council considered an appeal and has voted five-zero to deny the appeal and uphold the termination of that employee. The position is identified as a fire department battalion chief. And that was a previous dismissal that was appealed. On the housing authority agenda, the board also met on closed session on Item C, which was potential initiation of litigation. The matter is identified in the agenda. It involves enforcement of a covenant against a property listed in the agenda. In that matter, the board also voted five-zero to authorize the city attorney to initiate appropriate litigation to enforce affordable covenant on that property. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next, we have our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Duper. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Dear Father in heaven, thank you again for an opportunity to serve the community. We ask that you watch over and guide us tonight as we deliberate on issues. And please protect our first responders and public safety officers as they protect us daily. Again, thank you for all your blessings in allowing us to live in a beautiful community like we do. Your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I -- On the closed session announcement on the personnel matter, I neglected to mention that the council did direct the city attorney to finalize and prepare for execution by the mayor a formal decision on that, which should be done in the next few days.
Thank you. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, then we have our public comment. We have one request to speak. If anyone else would like to speak, please fill out a form. Request to address the city council. And the speaker is Roy George.
Dear Council, dear mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity. I work next door at the Citibank. I'm a mortgage banker at the Citibank next door. So, I have two branches. One is in the other city, and this second branch I have. Just to comment that in the other branch, you know, homeless population were pretty next to the branch. We had a lot of disturbance there. They come inside the branch. Last week, you know, somebody came in and she do something to all the employees there. Then a few months ago, one girl, she was banging on the door and she cracked her head open. So, compared to that, this branch is much quieter. I don't see many disturbances in the city. So, I don't know what's the difference. What do you guys do differently? So, I'm just curious to know, do you have a plan for right now and for the future? That's the only one question. And plus, I'm running for the election, District Supervisor for the County of San Marino.
What do you plan, you're looking for?
So, we are discussing about homelessness everywhere in the city, county, and the state. So, do we have a concrete plan for the next five years? Because I live in the city of Redlands. We have a big problem there. We are kind of trying to deal with that. So, what happens if that same situation happens in the city of Loma Linda?
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We are unable to respond, but I guess we will, in the future, be talking about homelessness as an issue. And we discuss it occasionally in public forums, our opinions. But as the city council, we can't respond directly because it's not an agendized item. If you'd like to stay afterwards, some of us would be willing to let you know what we think as individuals. Any other reports from any public member? Okay, then we'll move on to our scheduled items. We have a public hearing. Item number one, Council Bill O-2019-05, First Reading: Amending and Adopting the Building Code.
Okay, we have Patrick from Willdan to -- He's our building official here, so Patrick will present the changes.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jarb. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and staff. As Jarb said, my name is Patrick Johnson. I have the pleasure of being here tonight to present the first reading of the 2019 code adoption for the California building codes. Every three years, each jurisdiction in the state of California is mandated to adopt the California building codes and make amendments that are reasonably necessary because of local climate, geographic, topographic conditions. Modifications must be filed with the California Building Standards Commission in order to become legally effective by January 1st, 2020. In adopting the 2019 California building codes, we must amend certain sections of the Loma Linda municipal code to reflect the changes that have occurred within the new codes. All the changes that are occurring are editorial. No major changes. Climate and geographical requirements that are specific to the city of Loma Linda are not changing from the previous code cycle. Chapter 7A of the California Building Code and Section R 337 of the California Residential Code still regulate structures constructed in high-fire hazard areas. As far as recommendation goes, it is recommended that we waive the first reading of the adoption of the California building codes with amendments and a second reading to occur at the city council meeting on November 12th, 2019. If you have any questions, I can answer. Any questions? No questions?
Are there any Loma Linda amendments necessary?
What's that?
Are there -- are we doing any amendments?
If I recall right, there is one on swimming pools that was left out in the building codes. What it has to do with is when the new codes, for whatever reason, right now, swimming pools, you're required to have a fence around. That kind of got left out of this new code cycle. So, I brought that in as far as the amendments go for the swimming pools. It's an old section that got brought into the new code. California's in the process of fixing it.
Okay, so they temporarily don't care about the children?
I don't know.
Sounds like they left the children's needs out of the code.
Yes.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
Yeah, so that would be the only one. Other than that, as far as the changes go, as with the new code, you end up with new code sections, same language. So, a lot of the changes that are occurring are just code sections that are just reflecting the 2019 codes. Pretty basic.
Okay, if there are no questions, then I'll open the public hearing with the traditional bang of the gavel. Come forward, one. Come forward, all, who would like to speak on this topic.
Thank you.
No takers, then the public hearing will be closed. What's the pleasure of the council regarding the first reading status and setting the second reading?
I'll go ahead and move that we pass Council Bill 0201905. First reading set the second reading for November 12th.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is a unanimous vote. So, that is approved. It will be set for November 12th. Our next item is number two, Public Hearing on our California Fire Code.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see all you again. It really is. Oh, I'm back. Just for a short time. As my colleague explained, I'm here to ask for the same recommendation that we introduce the new code, the 2019 California Fire Code and the 2018 International Wildland Urban Interface Code, commonly known as the WUWE code for us, which encompasses our wildland. I ask that you, as my colleague described, conduct a public hearing on the adoption of those two codes, introduce Council Bills 0201906 and 0201907 for first reading, set the second reading roll call vote for November 12th, and also to adopt the Council Bill Resolution 2019-38, which adopts the findings related to the adoption of the 2019 California Fire Code. And I too, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Any significant changes?
No. As Patrick indicated, most of the changes that we had to make sure came across the board without any problems were just itemized things, the code reference numbers, et cetera. As far as the municipal code is concerned, we added two items in there off the top of my head. One was to deal with the WUWE land code regarding barbecues. Specifically, back in there, any charcoal type barbecues are no longer allowed in our WUWE land. And we also added our city parks. The approved barbecues that can be used are the propane type with one-pound canisters, which should reduce the threat of fires in the parks and the wildland. And then the second one was a little bit more intensive. And that was, you're familiar, all of you in the city here, that there's been regular additions of solar panels on people's roofs. That has evolved, and it's all good how it's evolved. One of the issues that has evolved in that is the use of batteries, where in the past, you had the solar panels on the roof, but you, surprisingly, even though you're producing power, if you had a power outage, your batteries, you don't have any batteries. So, the power outage, you couldn't get immediate power from the solar power you were generating. It was kind of a conundrum. So, a lot of these companies now are producing batteries that when the power goes down, your battery will kick in. And the change we were required to make on the installation of those is not allow them in the garage. They have a disconnect on them.
Are not allowed in the garage?
Not allowed in the garage. So, for a fire situation, where specifically in the daytime, the panels up there are generating energy. So, we don't want to -- and the way we fight a fire, we get on the roof and cut a hole in the roof. So, it's very delicate. You get up there and you don't want to cut through wires. That's all been fixed in a lot of aspects as the industry has grown and gotten more advanced. But the first thing we do is set off the disconnects for the energy that may be coming from those panels down to where the guys might be cutting through things so that the power is off from those panels. But if you have batteries, the second the power is shut off, the battery turns on. So, wherever those cables may be going, the same thing is a problem. If the guys get a saw in there and cut across those cables, it's just like cutting through the cables from the panels themselves. That also has a disconnect on it. But when the battery is put in the garage, out of sight, out of mind, and the potential of not being able to get to that disconnect and shut it off and make that battery safe, we don't allow them in the garage.
So, then the battery is outside to be stolen?
No, they're big pieces of equipment, and they're bolted down to a pad. And then they have protective covers over them, and then a disconnect that would disconnect them.
People disassemble air conditioning units for $10 a copper.
I can't dispute that, but...
Yeah. Plus, it's no fun putting out a lithium battery fire. When Teslas go up, they go up like a Roman candle.
Right.
But not Chevy bolts.
No, bolts are immune. Bolts. Go ahead.
My question is a broad one about what you described. And I'm not sure if you addressed on page 11 of the various ordinances, talks about exterior audible and visible alarm notification should be provided. And then the battery issue that you just described is on pages 15 and 16. My question is, how are community members going to be made aware of these changes that you're describing? And how long will they have to address the issues? And what about disputes involving the cost of addressing these changes? So, it's kind of a three-part question.
Yeah, at the counter, I get, the way we get, let's just touch on the solar panels first. The solar panel companies go and sell the product, the system for the property owner. And then they bring their plans into us. We check those over the counter, both building department.
So, this only applies to newly installed solar units, not to existing solar units?
And there is no, so far at this point, I think, off the top of my head, as far as batteries concerned, we've only had two or three that have -- This part of the industry is just starting to take off. In fact, in the past years, when I've started to hear a couple of the companies that are doing, that are advertising that.
And so, existing solar units are exempt from the change in the ordinance?
Yeah, their systems are already on the roof. They don't have batteries.
They don't have the batteries.
They don't have the batteries. Yeah, they're already on the roof.
And we just changed our, or are changing our solar units, right? Are they the ba -- do they have battery backup or not?
No.
So, we bought the cheaper chicken. Well, then, we ought to be in good shape.
The first time the RDA bought the cheap chicken.
But again, my question is, and you at least partially answered it, if it only applies from this point forward, then that makes sense.
Right.
But what about the exterior audible and visible alarm notification ordinance?
And I'm assuming I'd have to look then.
Page 11.
11. Is that for sprinklers or -- it would be for sprinklers.
It says exterior audible and visible alarm notification, and then there's a sentence beneath that.
I think that was already in the code, because I know my house has it.
But it's red, so...
Yeah, what we did there is we added one more thing. As far as, that's residential sprinklers. And so, we'll talk real quickly, commercial. Commercial buildings, this building, when you ever have a sprinkler activation and water is flowing through the system, it sets off a trigger, and that alarm, that sets off an alarm, and you get an audible alarm. In the 13D, the residential sprinkler situation in the codes, as they've redone the codes, they have taken the position, and this is probably true, how many of us are in a parking lot anymore and we hear a car alarm go off? And we do anything about it? So, in the, for the builders, a way of being able to cut costs in a building of a house, and particularly the sprinkler system, which is required here and statewide now. But we are first in having that requirement, or one of the first. To save money, they've taken the thought pattern that a bell, and I've seen this myself happen, a bell can go on all night long, and nobody will do a thing about it. And so, what we did there is we added a visual strobe so that when that, if somebody, I had one recently up at the houses at the other end here, where somebody hit us. One of the kids, I think, hit the sprinkler head. And it ran, and it ran, and ran, and ran. And nobody realized that the thing had broke and that the water was running in the house. It's just another alarm ringing. So, when it was finally called in, there was a heck of a lot of water damage in there. So, what we're adding to that alarm that's going to, well, first of all, if they tried to get away, and I don't want to say get away with it, they tried to cut costs by no longer adding a bell to residential sprinkler systems. We have added that back as one of our municipal ordinances to continue to have the bell, but also add a blue strobe. So, the combination of those two, if that happened and somebody hears a bell ringing, they'll see that flashing blue, and it'll prompt them to call 911.
But again, that'll be from this point forward, not for existing.
No.
Okay.
No, as a move forward.
Okay, thank you. Good to see you again.
Good to see you guys. No further questions?
Any other questions, we still need to do a public hearing. Okay, no questions, so public hearing. Come forward if you'd like to speak on this modification of our fire code. Nobody's moving, so I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure?
Yes, presumably, the council would want to act on this Item 2 by including A, B, and C. There's two ordinances and the one resolution, all related to the fire codes. And similarly, on Item number 1, there were A through N separate codes that were included in that motion. Those are all listed on the agenda.
And B will take effect immediately? Or is a 30-day lag?
Well, the resolution's immediate, but it affects, supports the ordinance, which is not effective, so...
Yeah. Okay, so the appropriate motion would be to approve Items A, B, and C. Council Bill O-2019-06 has the first reading and setting the second reading for November 12th. Same treatment of Council Bill O-2019-07, making this the first reading and setting a second reading for November 12th and approving outright Council Bill R-2019-38.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is a unanimous vote. So, come back on November 12th for another exciting episode in the California Fire Code. Next is Item number 3. We have two public comments, but we will have them speak after we get our community development presentation on a tentative tract map for demolition of a housing structure and entitlement of a 16-lot residential subdivision.
You took the wind out of my sails. This is a tentative tract map, combination of two existing lots and creation of a 16-lot subdivision. And there is a house on there that will be demolished. It's, hold on, let me go back here. It's, the two parcels are on the far east end of First Street, where it crosses the extension of California. And part of the discussion is, and I got caught up on this too, is California does not go all the way through. There's the Wash there. And this is just south of the Wash, as if California would go through. So, the far east end of First by California. This combines two parcels, and then it creates 16 new parcels. Demolition of the residence, road improvements, a new cul-de-sac. In that, there also, there's an alleyway that's going to be paved and redone, and then a 10-foot sound wall for, because it's along the railroad tracks to mitigate sound. And then all the typical improvements that go with a tract map. We're not discussing any houses on there. All we really are is talking about the land division at this point and the rules around that land division. So, the existing use, it's a single-family residence right here. They have a nursery, actually, you'll see a picture later, a more current picture. The nursery covers this entire area down here. The two tracks, this is a remainder of an old rail line, and then the residential tract here. The area has been fully disturbed over time. To the north and west is single-family residential. To the south is the railroad track. And then to the north and the east is the San Mateo Wash and the flood control property. And these are the flood control lands right here. We can see kind of how the tract works out. This is the First Street coming across over to Bryn Mawr, the extension of California. You can see the Wash here. There's no bridge, so this is turn in down to here, and then a cul-de-sac in here. Cul-de-sac is designed to be large enough to accept trash trucks, normal delivery trucks and those, so we can get our turnarounds through here. There is, as part of this, what we call a crash gate, so an emergency gate for the larger fire trucks to be able to come in, come out, and make their turnaround, so they don't have to back out of this thing. There will be a sound wall along the railroad tracks down here. And then this is an existing alleyway behind the houses to the north. And this alleyway will be rehabilitated and paved to allow, first for the fire trucks and just to clean that up against these properties. All of the lots are at least 7,200 square feet, and they all do meet the code requirements as far as width and depth. You can see parcel 1, the old railroad, the old railroad right of way. And then parcel 2, where the house was. It is exempt from, categorically exempt from CEQA, and it does meet the conditions for infill development. Although it is exempt, we did a little bit of extra work on this project. So, there was a traffic, a traffic study, a biological assessment, so looking for biological diversity or any kind of animals that could be there. And then there's also some issue brought up as to cultural resources on the site. So, we did a cultural resources study as well on the site. So, what found from the cultural resources was done by Jeanette McKenna. They concluded there's no paleontological or significant cultural resources on the site. The property's been developed and disturbed multiple times over the last 131 years. It's currently, as I said, next to the railroad tracks and is being used as a nursery. The original property was, subdivision was created in 1890. The current structure that's been there, is there right now, was demolished in 1961 and then replaced. And there's a second structure that was demolished in 2003. 2003 structure, there was a cultural resource study done on that as well, and there were no significant items or impacts found when that structure was demolished. Because of the sensitivity for Native American Cultural Resources Study, whoops. We worked with San Manuel Band of Mission Indians to develop a mitigation and monitoring plan. San Manuel basically wrote it for us, and we adopted it. So, the applicant and the city is, and San Manuel is accepting of the monitoring program. So, when we took a look at the cultural resources on this area, this is the site we're looking at down here, the current railroad tracks. Back in 1880s, there was a rail line that was built, and that's kind of that little hook we see in the property here. It's coming off the railroad line that went all the way to downtown Redlands. It was called the Dinkie Railroad. And then it currently, basically, if you go farther out, it goes up to Citrus and then into downtown Redlands. And that site has been abandoned and, once again, completely disturbed. So, you can kind of see what's on the site currently. There's a lot of activities. It's an active nursery. The buildings have been kind of used and disturbed. There's some rubble along the edges. You can see the railroad tracks. There are some old railroad ties and some spikes left over from the Dinkie Railroad. And then the nursery operations that are going on there. So, whoops, I went past, and I do want to get into this. Oh, she took that out. If you will, give me one moment, because there's a set of slides I do want to work through that kind of shows this disturbance, if you don't mind. I apologize for that. We're going to use the slides that we used at the planning commission. Everything is pretty much similar. As we've seen, we put... As we've seen, we put in some aerial photographs that kind of show the site's development and what's happened over the last several years. This is 2002 from aerial photographs. There's the abandoned railroad bed, the current railroad track, and then the house that was demolished in 2003. 2004, you can see the house is gone here. The new house is in this, this area here. 2013, you can see the house has kind of expanded. They've gotten this area, and we saw the railroad tracks and the open area where the old house was. 2016, and 2000, sorry, 2004, and 2003, 2002, 2004, you can kind of see where, when they did the San Mateo Creek realignment and all the work there, this whole area was overgraded as part of that work. You can see all the grading and all the work happened. Once again, the rail line, the old house, the new house, and then all this, this grading in this area in the southeast corner. 2013, we're starting to get some activity in here, and I can kind of see where the creek bed has been realigned. 2016, we've got the, the activity from the nursery, and this is 2018 with the full nursery activity all the way to the southern and eastern boundaries of the property. So, when we look back at the soil disturbance, we've got the railroad from 1878 to the present, the Dinkie Railroad from 1880 to 19, 1888 to 1915, the old house from 1915 to 2003, the new house, the flood control work, that overlay grading that we saw, and then the current nursery activities. So, pretty much all of this, all of this ground has been completely, completely disturbed. So, can you flip me back again to the... So, it is compatible with the general plan. It is compatible with existing and future uses. We've, we've made findings to support the project. As I said, we've, and it's in your packet, we've done a fairly extensive cultural resource study and have, you know, have a very extensive cultural resource monitoring program in place for any activity that would happen there. So, staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission also recommended approval of this project. Thank you. Any questions?
What is the zip code of this property?
I believe it's a Bryn Mawr zip code.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? If not, then I'll open the public hearing, and our first request for discussion is from Edward Diaz.
My name is Edward Diaz. I live at 26405 First Street, Bryn Mawr, and my concern is on the alley work that, I'm hoping that the alley on the, on the north side gets a gutter set up there to catch the runoff. Because my, my property, the Diaz property, consists of two lots, and I've, I've put a small dump truck loaded dirt on both sides of the alley fence there to remedy the past erosion, you know, because where, where, there's a grade there, you know?
So, you're lower than the, than this property?
Pardon?
You're lower than this property, so the water flows off that...
Yeah, there's a grade, there's a grade there in that, that area, you know? And, and my concern is on the, the work that gets done on the, on the alleyway that the north side have a gutter foot in, installed for drainage, the runoff.
My question of staff is, because there's no CEQA, was there no hydrologic study because this is infill?
There was no hydrological study on this. Currently, alleyway is dirt and broken-up asphalt and really poor repair. But I think we can work with the, with the applicant to do some type of a roll gutter or an asphalt. Yeah, and the entire alleyway will be paved. Right. Right, the alleyway will be paved. It's currently used by the trash truck. Those residents put their trash out back. It's their driveway. Most of those houses park around the back. But we can work with the applicant to put a, like a little asphalt berm as part of that to keep the water from shedding anyplace that's low.
So, this project does not trigger requirement for detention?
There, there is onsite detention. If you go back to... Excuse me, thank you. So, there's, there's onsite detention in this area here, so, and this, this is a detention basin to catch the runoff from these properties. The sheet flow, you can see from the topographical, the sheet flow is this way off this. So, there's detention in this.
Which of those numbers is the Diaz property?
Which, which one is yours? Red points the...
There are numbers on them, 20...
Where's your house?
I'm about midway, midway in the loop there. I'm about midway.
Somewhere here?
So, he's, he's west of the detention basin?
The water drains, drains into the houses.
Yeah.
There, there's slope. We're at the base of a foothill right there, and it slopes, and, and I, my concern is that a, that a gutter, drain is got to be, put, put on the north side of the alleyway, you know?
Yeah, my question is, is does the grading plan include draining the entire property into the detention basin? And if so, then your concerns would be alleviated.
It includes draining everything except, and the engineer here can correct me, except this portion here. You can kind of see where the, the topographical, so everything from about 10 over will drain in the basin. This very large lot is designed to absorb its own water, which is required by the California Water Quality Act or Federal Water Quality Act. So, they have to, they have to catch their own water. And I believe what Mr. Diaz is concerned about is now that the road's going to be an impervious surface, whatever water hits the road is going to shed onto whichever side of the property.
The properties, because there's the grade there.
So, whatever wa, and that's...
It drains into, drains into the houses.
So, that's why I said we can work with the applicant to put a, you know, an asphalt berm that will keep the water from shedding off the road onto the, into the houses.
But then where would it go, west or east?
It would then follow whatever the path of the road is and dump someplace there. Probably to the north and the east.
And then with a, with a dump, could they dump it into the detention basin?
Probably.
See, I don't, I see topographic lines, but I don't know which is up and down.
This is up, that's down. So, it would, it would flow down either this way into the tracks and into the south, the part of the channel down here, or into this way into the detention basin. And what we're really looking at is whatever water would, would flow off the, the street itself, not, not anything generated from the site.
Because it looks to me like, just following the contour lines, that that road dips as it goes west. Is that true? It gets lower as it goes west?
What was your address again, sir?
Pardon?
Your address?
26405 First Street. I'm sorry about that. I meant to give it, and I didn't. I'm new to this.
You did a great job. You've stimulated a big discussion, so... It looks to me like it falls off to the west, in which case you can't get it back to the detention basin, so it's going to be funneled into...
You can see the...
The tip of that...
The lines here, it'll funnel into the tip, and then back into the storm drain and out to... This wraps out and hits Bryn Mawr.
So, there is a storm drain?
Yes, it's a catch basin.
On the western side? Okay. Well, I, I certainly would hope that it's better than the current situation when the alley is redone, so you can just make that a condition of the approval when the time comes.
Okay, we can add that.
Yeah. So, your concerns are very well taken, and we will take them into consideration, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Fred Ramos.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Fred Ramos. I live at 26445 First Street, there in the Bryn Mawr area. Zip code 92318. I've been there since 1939, so, and I'm also a commissioner with the city. My problem is that... Where is this?
The red button.
The red button?
Red button.
Okay, my concern is that this area right here was told to me by some of the old timers that it was a cemetery that was placed there because the city of Redlands would not allow anybody from the Bryn Mawr area to be buried hillside. San Bernardino had the same thing at Pioneer. They would not allow people from Bryn Mawr to be buried there. So, the people had to find a place in order to bury their dead or deceased, and they were placed in this corner right here. So, for the less, since the city was established in 1970, I have brought it to the attention of this is a sacred area, and it should be. And I don't think that San Manuel has a history of this area, because at one time, all the tribes, all the tribes in the area, from San Diego to Morongo to Torres Martinez, were gathered here because of a cuidanadero. A cuidanadero told them that the person was going to come with a, with a stick and was going to kill him. Now, the stick was a, was a rifle. And so, what happens is that all the tribes merged in this area here, which was called Nahat by the Native Americans. Nahat in some tribes mean running water. This is San Mateo Creek and the San Anna River. They were supposed to go to the area to be saved from this man that was riding a horse with a stick to the area of the Arrowhead, and that's the reason the area was called Nahat, because of the rivers. You're supposed to go to that area. So, this area here has a lot of history, lot of history. And you're going to put a drainage right in here, and I live here in this one area, which I don't believe is good because of what's going on with the pollution of the different waters that run off. From the old soils, from the, when the area was nothing but orange groves, and they were fumigated with all these different chemicals that are outlawed now by the United States of America. But these chemicals are still there. They will not go away. So, you're going to have a drainage here in this area where I live, and it's going to affect the runoff here. Because from this area here where Mr. Diaz lives to here, the runoff is going to be that way, and from this area here, the runoff is going to be into this area. So, there's going to be two runoffs in that area. And they need to put a berm, I say, along the houses in order for the water to run, to run either onto First Street here or First Street over here. The rails itself, you've got rails here. There are, there are four trains that go by every hour, and each one of those trains carry at least three engines in the front. Some of them carry five engines if you're going up to the Beaumont area because of going up the hill. You've got four between three and five engines with diesel running out of their stacks or out of their engines. You've got, you've got metal against metal. Two stacks high of boxes are on the trains. Some of the trains are along from 75 cars to 125 or 130 cars. And you're running, you're running, like I said, five engines every hour up and down this area. You're going to place all these people here with all that pollution, all that pollution that you're going to put them in. It's good for the medical center because they, they drive on, they drive on, on, on people that are injured or hurt. So, you're polluting this one area right here. What's going on in Brazil right now, the eco situation, it's going to affect the whole country. And now, we've taken all the oranges that were in this area and placing houses in warehouses. You're adding on to the pollution and the hurting of the people. I'm not against the project. Sure, we need houses, but I don't think this is a proper place to place them. Any questions? If no's, I'm gone. Thank you.
I've got a question about the, the, I don't know if you, it's not called a retaining wall. What's the wall for the silence, is it a silence wall?
Sound wall?
Sound wall?
Yes.
It's a 10-foot-high wall, right?
Yes.
How does that affect water that's draining out that way? Does that now route, by putting that wall in there, does that route water one direction or the other?
That wall would be on the highest point, so it would, it would keep whatever water that came off the railroad track on the railroad right-of-way.
Right.
And then everything else would just, it's the top of the mountain as far as the...
But, but in some degree, that's also going to stop drainage, right? I mean, that's currently there?
It should not. The railroad track has their own, they have their own swell to catch their drainage.
Yeah, the railroad track is high compared to the surrounding land, right?
Thank you for bringing up the wall. I'm sorry that I missed it. But even if you put a 25-foot-high wall, the engines are still going to be above that 25-foot wall because of what this, but this, this area here is about 15 feet higher than this, the parcel area. So, even if you put a 25-foot wall there, the pollution from the train and everything is still going to go into the area. You can put a 25-foot wall up there, and it's not going to help. You'll be able to see the engine above that 25-foot wall, and they're proposing an eight-foot wall right now. You've got, here in this area where all these houses are at, on the south side of the rails, they're getting polluted right now because of the, of the, and also, I don't know whether you know it, but on the south, the south side of the, the south side of the rails, there's supposed to be a petroleum line going through there. So, if there's a derailment, so if there's a derailment on one side, on the south side of the rails, it's going to affect that petroleum line that is running from Texas all the way to, to Long Beach. So, you've got that hazard right there. Thank you for bringing up the wall. I'm sorry that I didn't, that I didn't bring it up. It was part of my issue, but I was so concerned with the rest of it that I forgot about it. Thank you for bringing up the wall.
I have a question. The, I guess my concern is, in the staff report that you sat and heard along with us, my impression in reading and hearing the report is that there's been a pretty thorough examination about the property related to any cultural artifacts or whatever. And, and what I, and I hear you disputing that.
I am disputing that because it is not factual. It is not factual. Most cities have ever been made. Half of the people that work for the city... Most cities have ever been made, half of the people that work for the city have never been into that one area. You might drive by there, but they don't hear the study that I have. I have history from people of the past. I have history from the people of the past, not the people that come out with a piece of paper saying, "Hey, this is so in that area." I have proof, I have history proof.
Yeah, and, okay. I don't think people that put these reports together don't put some effort into the science of figuring out what's underground. Uh, and what I hear you saying is that based on, on, uh, historical conversations you've had, that you believe there, that that's a cemetery? How do we resolve this kind of a difference?
What happened at the Peterson, Peterson Track, I don't know whether you know the history of the Peterson Track, where the, uh, the, uh, historical park is at, they found, they found bones that belonged to ancestrys of people that lived there, and they were thrown in the dump. They were never told that they were, that they were, uh, from previous history, Native Americans, which I am.
No, I, I know that.
So that is why my concern, I'm native, you people are native.
I'm catching up to you, though.
To answer Councilman Duper's question, you can see right, the railroad track is right here, this, you can see how they're kinda these lines that are close together on the top, and then this little wedge that runs through here is essentially a V ditch, a slope at the bottom that runs along the tracks on both sides, so that's, that will shed the railroad water out towards the storm drain on the end. So the, the wall will not have any impact, it'll be on the top of that little, little
I got another comment, not actually related directly to this entitlement, but kind of along the same lines of any developer or anybody who wants to put houses in right there. How do we stop, I, we, we've passed ordinances, we've done all kinds of stuff, how do we stop those stupid trains from blowing their damn horns all night long? Because they just ignore our laws.
No.
Yeah, I hear them.
I know, I hear them too, I have...
You're right there, aren't you?
What, what, what happened is, I asked them, because we have a quiet zone there. What happened is when there's animals or people walk inside the railroad right away, then they blow the whistle.
That's BS, that's an excuse. They, they consistently blow those horns as they come down into the, into the valley, I think, but anyway.
I hope, I hope the engineer has broken up with his girlfriend. There's an old story that an engineer used to toot the horn because his girlfriend lived in Loma Linda, he wanted to let her know he was going through. But I think he's long retired, that's an old story. Uh, are those contour lines one foot?
I am not.
Cause you can tell how high the railroad track is by how many contour lines, and I see about three? And then there's, it's down into a dip, and then it goes back up, so there's maybe two. Is it, is it two feet above? Or is it ten feet above? Are there five-foot contour lines?
It, it looks like a two-foot. My glasses aren't that good.
We could always go to the site.
But it does, it's not a, it's not a really steep slope, it's a pretty gentle, um, fall off across from one end of the site to the other.
So the sound walls are typically high enough?
The, the purpose of the sound wall is not to protect the entire house so you don't see the locomotive or anything. What it is, is they calculate the angle that the train is at to where the, the body of the, the habitable part of the house is. Remember, there's, there's the train, there's kind of an angle as you look up to shield that as much as possible, so you're not sitting in the living room and hearing that driving, driving past. It just, it is designed to reduce the, the amount of noise from the train.
Yeah, knowing physics, uh, sound walls work better for freeways than for trains because trains have low-pitch sounds, and low-pitch sounds turn corners. Uh, high-pitched sounds from a freeway do not as well, and they tend to fly over the houses. Uh, but nonetheless, whatever the concerns are about the sound, it will be better than the status quo. The status quo ante is no sound wall at all.
It will be better than the status quo, and it's similar to what's, what's happening at, if you follow the track around down, down this side, um, there's houses that are kind of in a similar situation where there's sound wall, and the same Veterans Village has the, the sound wall, the houses back here behind Cold Street that go through town. There, there's quite a bit of that through the city that we use to mitigate that sound.
And with regard to the detention basin, Mr. Ramos, is your concern that the detention basin is going to shed water across the alleyway? Cause my contention is, knowing how these things work, it's essentially a retention basin, right? So it's a percolating retention basin?
The, the purpose of the basin is to capture the, the rain, typical rainwater, hold it for seventy-two hours with a percolation rate that then the water will percolate down, and it should be dry seventy-two hours after the next rain.
Is it officially a detention basin or a retention basin? In other words, does it have a spillway?
I, I believe there is, there is a spillway for overflow, yes.
If it has a spillway, then that would be a concern to Mr. Ramos across the alleyway. Would the proposed berm contain the spill?
It, it would contain whatever comes out, and I believe the spill, if I'm, stop me if I'm wrong, Dan. If the spill...
Yes, please.
Yeah, come on, he's the guy that designed it.
We're ignorant, we're just blathering. You know what you're talking about.
You're ignorant, but I'm not. I've lived it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. My name's Dan Haskins, I'm with Land Engineering Consultants. The engineer representing the owner and applicant, Diana Wallyott. And if I could have a moment, Fred, alone, I'd appreciate it, thank you. I wanted to address all the questions that were brought up tonight, there's a lot of confusion and a lot of incorrect answers. The tentative map, you don't see all the map here, first I want to address the alleyway. The alleyway is gonna be designed to tilt back to the southeast. There's a new curb and gutter going in, the high point of the alley will be against those existing properties. So it will drain back at three percent to a gutter, and all of that flow from about where Mr. Diaz's house is will flow east at a half a percent, go into a catch basin, and go back into the detention basin. The basin itself, the State of California Water Quality Management Act requires that the water quality storm, which is basically what we call a three-year storm, is retained. So that part is a retained storm. For the ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year storms, that is detained. So those will stage for up to, as Conrad mentioned, seventy-two hours, and the overflow that will ever go back to the alley, which is designed to go out to this low point right here, will go back down First Street. It's not designed to hit any of those homes. We've conveyed the flow from all of these lots. The building areas will all drain to the cul-de-sac, which will drain out, go into the basin. All the flows, I would say ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of all the track flows will end up in this basin. The only portion that won't, there's a high point right here, and we worked with JARB that this portion of the alley, which will be tilted southwesterly to alleviate the flooding of these homes, will be conveyed over here to a catch basin at Whittier Avenue. So to address this concern and meet Mr. Diaz's concerns, uh, the alley is being drained back to the south side of the alley and then conveyed over to storm drain facilities. The railroad itself has its own drainage system, uh, there's a flow line that runs along the middle of the two tracks as well as the north side of the northerly track rails that will go down and go into a detention, little detention area where there's an inlet, uh, catch basin that goes into Whittier into the storm drain system. The upstream flows from the flood control district are, can all, in this area, come through a flow line here into a public storm drain system, which is a forty-eight-inch RCP pipe that currently goes to the Santa Mateo Creek. That was designed and constructed by a private developer at the direction of the city probably thirty years ago. Um, so this one, we doesn't, we're improving the inlet system here, and we're conveying all the water to the east in the storm drain, the hundred-year queue to the storm drain system at Santa Mateo Creek. So essentially, with the sound wall, the drainage facilities we're putting in the alley, the detention and retention facility here with the mitigation overflow coming out to First Street at a less than historical manner than it is today. After the homes are constructed, the streets are constructed, the sidewalks are built, and all the impervious surfaces are there, the computations indicate that we're only gonna be putting out about eighty percent of the flow that goes there today in a hundred-year storm. So that's what we're required to do as engineers, and that's what we've done. We did do a hydrology analysis, and we did submit it, um, sequo exempt projects like this, it's just mainly put in the file, but we did extensive hydrology on this and made sure that the, uh, post-development condition is, uh, is well within the means to meet, uh, it's less than historical condition today. Other questions and concerns? Yeah, the sound, sound wall, this is an entitlement, a formal noise study will be done, and the thickness of the wall, whether it's crowded, solid, the final height of the wall, all of those things will be determined at the time of the final engineering stage. But currently, um, the variance that we've got approved, a planning commission, we're requesting final approval tonight, is for the eight-foot wall. Um, the homes all here are designed to be graded down below that, so we've got about a twelve-foot drop total planned for the development. As far as the comments on the cultural resources study, I, you know, we work with the city, and we highly respect Mr. Ramos and his family. I believe that the culture, the, the results and the findings, working with San Manuel and the Cultural Resources, uh, McKenna Group, the conditions that are placed on the property, we're in full agreement of during any grading operations, a monitor from Mr. Ramos's family or an approved monitor from San Manuel may be present during the entire beginning operation to ensure that if there's anything found in there, we certainly wanna respect that. But with the level of the research that's been taking place now, we have to come to some line to move forward, and yet we still wanna respect and honor Mr. Ramos and his family. So, and that's what I believe our proposal is doing tonight.
Uh, just a couple of questions in regards to the houses being approcc, so close to the railroad track. Um, is there a minimum or maximum amount that you have to be from the tracks?
Um, currently, the railroad, um, we've, we've worked with the people in Omaha, and then the local office in Colton has given us the ownership map, and they own fifty-foot right-of-way there.
Okay.
That's currently what they have, and so, um, back in, we understand back in eighteen seventy-one, the original construction easement for all of the railroad was two-hundred-foot wide, a hundred-foot on each side. Uh, the result back in eighteen seventy-one, and then the first map that got created by Whittier and, was it Mayfield? Mayfield and Whittier in eighteen ninety, um, resulted in a fifty and fifty-foot right-of-way, so a total of a hundred-foot ownership there.
So does that mean that the fence you're referring, or the, yeah, fence you're referring to is gonna be fifty feet away?
It'll be fifty-one feet.
Fifty-one feet.
From the center of the railroad right-of-way.
I'm assuming that the houses on the south side that are already there have similar fifty...
Well, in this case, they're actually a little farther, a little farther west, and they come back to within fifty. It sort of jogs all around, depending on how descriptions were written and understood. Um, it's sort of been all over the map, so to speak.
Okay.
So, um, I know that a gentleman at the planning commission area had brought up the Luloma Credit Union construction back in the eighties, and they had that similar question of what was the right-of-way? And it's, it kind of moves all around there, and so the determination from the railroad is not officially come for, in form of a letter, but they have provided us an ownership map, and they only own through this area fifty feet on our side.
Do you notify them of this project?
Um, I don't, they were provided notification through the standard protocol that we gave to the city, which is the surrounding owners.
So they're usually aware of any construction among, next to their railroad?
Um, we, we never heard any response from them.
So, but they are notified?
They get the standard mailing that everybody, three-hundred-foot radius, so anybody that's within three-hundred feet gets mailing, they're adjacent, so they would've gotten the mailing as well.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of developer do you do in California? Cause that's the, that's the way in and out, right? First Street in California, difficult sound, how do you get there?
Basically, the circulation will be coming down First Street, and then you'll enter the subdivision here on California, and then you can loop back through. We worked extensively with the fire department, and what Conrad failed to mention, this isn't really just sized for trash trucks, this is your largest ladder truck can turn around here. This is a sixty-foot curb radius, a hundred-and-twenty-foot diameter curb-to-curb, which is currently forty feet larger than anything you have in the city. So, and so they're good. They did you right.
But it steers in the rear so it can handle anything.
But, um, so the idea would be that fire can have the choice, they can come in and do a full turnaround, not have to back up and get out, or if, uh, there's another, a secondary means of access to get out here and come back and then do a loop back around and get out. So we've, we've worked with them. It is not ideal, it is an odd-shaped property, but in order to develop it in, in many iterations and working with fire, and I think two different chiefs, um, we came up with this plan, and they finally had, had agreed to it, so.
Do you guys want fully developed California?
Yeah, California is gonna be half-street plus, so we've got, um, I believe there's twenty-eight foot of asphalt, and then when these properties, these are currently owned by the San Antonio County Flood Control District, but they've been designated what they call surplus property. So the Army Corps, when they came through here to do the Santa Mateo project as a part of a water recharge and storm flow, uh, channel design, they, they requested the purchase of many properties around here. Um, so these parcels were part of the purchase that they directed flood control to purchase. Now that the improvement is all done, the flood control district has determined them surplus, so they can be resold for development. So one of the concerns and the questions that came up, I know that the city was, um, looking at the option of changing this back to open space, and I know flood control verbally had told us, "Oh, no, we don't want that to happen," because it's, you know, we purchased the property under the residential zoning, and to retain its value, we'd like to keep that zoning if we go back to, to, to sell it. But I know, I don't know if Conrad, I know Conrad and, um, Lorena had made, uh, calls and tried to cut contacts with the county, but it, you know, they move a little slower than some, so I don't know if you ever got an official result from that or not, maybe you can respond to that.
At what point does that drive us to put a bridge in?
Probably never, because you're, you're looking at, um, the, the county did say that they did wanna retain this lot, and there's a lot that goes down here a little bit as, as surplus at the current resident, residential and planned community zoning to keep their value. So they did not want to do open space, and actually Dan worked with us to make sure that California goes all the way down here so that this lot has access, and we didn't landlock in the process. There's quite a bit of juggling involved in that. Um, what, what was your other question? I'm sorry.
The bridge.
The bridge. The, because, because the railroad track is here, and then there's just kind of the back of those houses that run next to the railroad tracks, there's no reason to put, you know, a, an expensive bridge for, you know, this, this handful of houses, so probably will never be a bridge through there.
Just kind of interesting, another point of interest.
Yeah, and it, it is, we, we agree, and what we looked at and what we worked out with JARB is that, you know, the alley, we, we agreed, you know, the alley, I think, was, the main concern the city had is we paved the alley from the cul-de-sac northeast to First Street. But we felt in keeping with the, you know, just the improving the property and doing things, we decided that we wanted to add and improve the entire alley along our frontage. And we thought that would be a benefit to the neighbors, I know we've gotten a little bit of feedback on that, but at the end of the day, providing, that's a public right-of-way, it's a public alley, it's owned by the city, uh, improving that, I think in time, they're gonna realize that's a nice accessory drive for them to get to the rear of their properties, as well as the trash truck driver's probably gonna like it, cause right now, it's a, it's an off-road race back through there, tumble and trample, so. But, um, anyway, I... But anyway, I think I've addressed, hopefully, I've addressed some of those original questions and concerns, but I can certainly address any other questions that you folks may have.
Any other comments from public? If you come forward, if you want to say more. Because we're still in the public comment.
Do I have to address myself again?
No.
Mr. Huntington went to Washington when they were building the rails from Nebraska to San Francisco, and he asked for an easement of three-hundred feet from the center. Hundred-and-fifty feet to one side and a hundred-and-fifty to the other side. He brought fifty feet that it was brought into the, that there was an easement, but Mr. Huntington placed a hundred, three-hundred feet from the center, a hundred-and-fifty feet on each side. So like I said, I'm a historian, I'm also with the federal government for thirty-eight years, working out of Washington, you see, so I am thorough in whenever I research an item or when I bring it to your attention. He has beautiful notes, speaks very well. I also, like I said, I'm very thorough whenever I present something to you. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't hear any. Okay, any other speakers? If not, then I'll close the public hearing. Staff recommendation is to approve the tentative track map. What do you guys think?
I move, we move tentative track map, P-18-124.
I'll second it, just with a comment, and I'm not the smartest person in the room, but it looks like these are going to create improvements for the homeowners on First Street, and if new houses are eventually put in there, it'll bring your property values up. And I think the evidence has shown that it's been graded once, I don't know how deep it was graded, but I'm not sure how far they're going to go down with this one. Obviously, we'll have monitors there on site, if there's anything historic that's uncovered, that stops everything, but it appears to be a win-win, especially for the residents there, the sound wall and the alleyway improvements, so it's my position.
It sounds like the drainage is addressed, so that's fine. I just want to make sure we don't let the sound wall issue drop, if we can kind of hold the feet to the fire, make sure that that's taken care of.
And for the record, would the motion include the findings and the conditions of approval as recommended by staff?
That is correct.
And there's a little bit of a discrepancy, because this was presented to us with a ten-foot wall by staff, and the applicant says it's only an eight-foot wall we're approving. Is that correct?
It's correct, it's an eight-foot wall, he's correct, I misspoke.
Do you want to change your motion?
But that will be, that will be firmed up later in the process, because that's just a tentative, part of a tentative track map, but the actual study on how much sound wall will be done later.
Run through the staff.
Right?
What the variance allows is up to eight feet.
Oh, no, 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 so this locks it at eight feet.
Okay, we could always grant, we could always grant a larger variance.
The motion needs to address the details of each of the items spoken, I mean, it's, we haven't made any major changes to exist in report, and we're keeping it as the report indicates.
The written report.
Yes.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I heard five ayes, that's approved. Next is the consent calendar, items four through eleven.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Here's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Old Business Council Bill O-2019-04, this is a second reading for roll call vote.
You're going to do a presentation again, Conrad?
Limited.
No, no presentation, second reading, roll call, roll call vote, please. This is, this is to remind you to remove the square footage requirement for alcohol service at a sit-down restaurant.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, read by title only.
It's entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, Amending Title Seventeen, Zoning, Chapter Seventeen Point Four Zero, Section Seventeen Point Four Zero Point Zero Two Zero, Land Use Regulations and allowable uses for the commercial and industrial zones. It's Development Code Amendment Number P-19-095.
And give me a vote.
All the way, yeah. We should have these pre-lit, so you can read it. Oh, we can keep those.
And it passes unanimously, thank you.
Item number thirteen, New Business Council Bill R-2019-39, Improving Policies and Procedures for Automatic License Plate Reader System. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a major report on this. As you're aware, the city has approved the purchase of certain automated license plate reader systems for use in the city. This would be pursuant to the city's contract for law enforcement services with the county sheriff's department. Under the Civil Code, there's a requirement for a public comment opportunity prior to implementing the use of these systems in the city, and there's also various requirements for policies and procedures as to privacy and appropriate use of the information generated by the system. The county has adopted such policies, the resolution before you tonight recognizes that we have given our citizens an opportunity to address the issue if they so choose, and formally adopts the county policies as here, as presently in place or hereafter amended to comply with any future changes in the code. Again, the county has these procedures, so since we're not actually operating the system, there's some question as to whether we have to adopt these policies ourselves, but in an abundance of caution, we felt it appropriate to place before you this action, so that we adopt the county's policies in case there were ever any question in that regard. It is not a formal public hearing, and unless there are persons wishing to address the matter, you may move approval of the resolution.
Can we declare it to be a public hearing in order to meet some other requirements?
It's not required to be a formal public hearing, merely an opportunity for the public, and they always have the opportunity to address anything that's on your agenda.
Okay, so let's have the minutes reflected, I'm informal, I'm informally asking anyone in the public who would like to speak on this topic.
This will be very short. Milford Harrison, this is 11795 Randolph Court. I really support license plate readers, they're very effective. I had a car stolen, and within two days, it was identified by a license plate reader at the San Manuel Indian parking lot, and the SO called me, and we went up, they had already arrested the people that stole it, and we were given our vehicle back.
When was that, Milford? When was that? How long ago?
About two years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you for that public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move we adopt Council Bill Number R-2019-39, approving policies and procedures for implementation of the automated license plate reader system.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Number fourteen, we have an update and some motions to be made regarding our municipal election of March three.
Thank you. The City of Loma Linda consolidates its general municipal election with the primary election, which is carried out by the county registrar of voters. That primary election is scheduled for Tuesday, March three, 2020, and will to elect three members to the city council for four-year terms. The seats available are those currently held by council members Riggsby, Papaskew, and Lenart. The filing period for nomination papers begins Monday, November eleven, and ends Friday, December six. City offices will be closed November eleven for the Veterans Day holiday, so papers will be available on Tuesday, November twelve. If no, if incumbent, excuse me, an incumbent does not file by 5:00 PM on December sixth, the filing period is extended to December nine. The election code provides for a tie vote to be resolved by lot, similar to the tossing of the coin that we did before, or by special election. If a runoff election is chosen, it is to be held not less than forty, no more than a hundred-and-twenty-five days after the results of the election. In 2001, the city council adopted a resolution providing for a runoff election should a tie occur. With the exception of the March 2000 election, which resulted in a tie vote resolved by coin toss, the city council has chosen to break a tie by runoff election. Council Bill R-201941 provides for a tie vote to be resolved by special election. Should the city council desire to resolve a tie vote by lot, that resolution should be adopted as amended to include by lot language. Otherwise, staff recommends adopting both council bills calling the election and adopting regulations for the candidate's statements.
Are we, are we permitted to modify that today?
Pardon?
Are we permitted to modify the?
Yes.
The lot issue today?
Currently, currently, resolution says we would resolve a tie vote by a special election. If you choose to resolve it by lot, we can amend the resolution tonight, and it would be adopted as amended to include by lot.
Well, I prefer using lots, just because it's more efficient. Special elections are very expensive.
Yeah, I feel like we had this discussion last time.
And, and I'm wanting to relitigate it and take another vote, because I think we came to the wrong conclusion.
I haven't been persuaded, I still like the idea of people getting a chance to vote again if they have to. The last election we had that got close was about forty-one votes, 2006, but other than that, everything's been well over twenty, thirty, forty percent, so I'm not worried about having to worry about any special elections.
I'm not worried about it either, but if it happens, I don't want to have a special election, but that's my position.
That's fine. I'm comfortable with the way the resolution writes.
You guys going to tip your hand, or are we going to have a vote? I don't think it matters either. There doesn't have to be, if there's, if there, if there are three votes against it, then...
We ultimately have to have them, you're talking about the...
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying, you know, I'm just taking the temperature of the council. It's not a big issue, it's, the chances are, you know, one in a million, so it's, it's not...
I think we've had this conversation a couple times, and I think, I think we all land kind of at the same place. I don't really have preference, I agree with Councilman Papaskew, I think there's some democracy kind of thing there, but it doesn't matter to me, I'll go either way.
To me, to me, to, to, yeah, to me, two bites at the apple is not worth the expense, but...
So, there's no, there's no more June election, even at the end of the county, right?
Not, not next year, no. I don't know if in 2022, the state will go back to a June primary or not, it's up to the state.
So the, the only reason they did it was to compete with Super Tuesday.
Yeah.
So it would only apply every fourth year, if that's the case, but, so we're going to have really odd terms of office, they're going to be long ones and short ones.
You don't think it applies all?
I don't know. Don't know.
They, they did, a number of years ago, we had, I know, a primary in March, and then they went back to the June, to the June primaries. So, it's, it's a decision that the state makes.
Yeah.
Whatever benefits them.
So then, you want to make the motion to...
What would be the perfect motion to amend this, as per that?
Yeah, just an amendment to the, to the proposal.
Yeah, I'd like to move that, I'd like to move the amendment, say the tie would go to lot. I think that's probably in reference to which one of the bills, forty-one or forty-two.
We'll let, we'll let this city clerk figure it out.
Forty-one.
Okay. So, I'll second it, okay. Is there anyone who would like to comment? If not, then we'll vote, the motion is to change resolution of a tie from a special election to a coin tosser by lots. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
No.
It carries three to two, so going forward, the ties will be resolved by lot.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on calling and giving notice of the election. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously.
Then I'll go ahead and move against Council Bill 2019-41.
I'll second that also.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion, adopting regulations pertaining to candidate statements? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous vote, and it is approved. So now we have opening of the joint meeting with the housing authority, and considering LLHA Bill R-2019-03 and Council Bill R-2019-43, approving a third amendment to affordable housing agreement.
As you may recall, we have an agreement with Mary Erickson Housing, originally to sell a group of scattered redevelopment housing, housing authority-owned lots throughout the city, use the proceeds from that sale to develop six single-family residential low-income units on Juanita Street in Bryn Mawr. We had, we've had two amendments already relating to the sale of the properties, there were some challenges selling some of the properties, one on Palm Street, it was not developable or sellable, and then some time extension for them to get through the sale and the design process on this. In this process, with the home building boom that we've gone through and prices going up, the cost to develop all six properties has exceeded the amount of revenue that's come from the sale of the scattered, we call it scattered sites, and what Mary Erickson is able to assemble through their internal financing mechanisms. So this, what this would do is amend the agreement to allow Mary Erickson to build four of the six in a first phase, and then build the second two in some future phase once funding becomes available. If you recall, and I don't know how many were on the council then, we did the same thing with the senior apartments on Poplar Street... thing with the senior apartments on Poplar Street. We had partial funding and managed to pull that off. So if you approve this, we will, we will proceed with Mary Erickson. They are at, at the point where they're ready to submit planning, engineering packages for construction drawings and proceed with the project. Any questions?
I'll go ahead and move both bills, Housing Authority Bill R dash two zero one nine dash zero three and Council Bill R dash two zero one nine dash forty-three.
I'll second. Okay, there's a motion and a second on both bills. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, they're both approved unanimously. Are there any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers?
Not, not a report, but I've been asked, and I talked with you earlier, Jar, two things I've been asked about repeatedly in the last month or so. One is the, what's going on with laying the pipe in Redlands Boulevard and when do we anticipate the completion of that? So that's one question. And the second is, I have had, and again, we talked about this as well, several community members talk with me about what seems to be a crime spree in, in what, eastern, southeast Loma Linda area. And so I know your responses, but I think in case there's anybody watching, they might want to know what's going on with those two projects or two issues.
Yes, sir. On the sewer line that are being under construction along Redlands Boulevard from California, eventually will go all the way across to E Street in the city of San Bernardino, that is the city of Beaumont, called Bryant Line, which is the sewer that have high salt content. They're scheduled to be, scheduled to be completed laying the pipe in, across the city of Loma Linda by the end of the month. And then they will move on to the city of San Bernardino. And after that completed, they will start paving the street, which is, I mean, they can grind the whole width of the lane and pave the street. Right now, if you go down New Jersey, New Jersey's closed right now because of that. They, they work on New Jersey Street.
Well, and that's one of the complaints I've had is that people are going down Mountain View, running into detours and traffic, then they get punted to California where they get punted to New Jersey.
Yes.
And I'm told there's a big traffic mess east of Loma Linda. Is there any kind of effort to coordinate the detours and, and roadwork between cities of Redlands and Loma Linda?
Yes, we are. We, we also, when we do our closure, we let, we notify city of Redlands. Unfortunately, the one that closing right now on New Jersey and Nevada, it has to do with the railroad, SBCTA doing the railroad track. And, and right now, they're closing, I think it's Nevada right now, crossing the freeway.
Well, I'm hearing about people that can't even get on the freeway because of the, the maze of detours.
Yes. And when, what we, we just did our off-ramp too at a Mountain View on ramp, off-ramp, but what we, what we're doing is, we close it between the hour of nine o'clock and, and six so that the morning rush will, will have a chance to get into town.
Yeah.
So if we do that.
And I'm sure that helps, but.
And with regard to the, the crime, I will let the captain address that, what's going on with the crime in Loma Linda and what we are doing, so.
In, so in, this is, I think what you're speaking about is the, the increase in residential burglaries in the south end of Loma Linda. Yeah, there, there has been an increase and it looks like that a good, a good number of them are, have the same mode, appear to be the same suspects involved. We have moved additional resources, clean traffic units, added detectives, schedule adjusting, doing surveillance, and have been working with both Redlands and the city of Grand Terrace who have experienced some of the same increases, believing to be involving the same suspects or crews.
And do we have a reason to believe that these license plate readers we just purchased are going to help in that effort?
We, we do believe that, that that's going to be a help. I, I could tell you from my experience working in the city of Highland, who has fixed cameras and then also cameras on their patrol units, it is a great resource to identifying vehicles for a variety of crimes. We have also brought in and have been bringing in some ALPR cars from trailers from additional cities that have loaned us those to try to put those at fixed positions so that we could capture license plates that are coming into the area.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to, you think it's the same people, do you have any general descriptions that we should be looking out for, assistant, being aware of, what to look for in case we find a car or individuals that may match the descriptions?
So we have done a, a crime flyer that we've shared with other law enforcement agencies. We have also shared that information with the city, notifying the public works so that while we're, they're out, they can be on the lookout for the, for the suspects. The vehicles change, but at this point, it's, it appears to be at least two black, young black male adults. But again, from ring doorbells and, and witness statements, the vehicles are changing and, and we don't have enough video surveillance to get a more detailed description.
Okay, any reports of officers?
Yes, sir, I have one. On November third and, November second, November third, there will be an ashow at the, at the airport here and we will have five public works, worker help them with sit up and, and clean up afterward. They will be working for them, so.
Thank you for assisting us with that. You said November first?
Second and third.
Okay, with that, the city council is adjourned and we'll return to our Housing Authority, which was opened earlier. We already discussed the closed session. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any non-agendized items on the Housing Authority? Seeing no takers, item number one was taken care of. We have our consent calendar for your consideration. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Any chair member reports? Hearing none, any reports of officers? Hearing none, that agenda is adjourned. Next is our redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any reports from the public on any non-agendized items? No takers, the consent calendar. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. We're adjourned and that's the end of tonight's consideration. Thank you for coming.